Well, having discussion about the thematic discussion as well in the meeting. Having said this, I would like to have a warm welcome to our president and meeting leader of today's meeting. Mister Pawan Joshi. The mic is yours.
Thank you, Mohan for your warm welcome and good morning all of you once again. We are getting back with your new energy. With our new brand, new meeting, meeting number one hundred and seventy, because previous meeting were not registered at official, so we decided to set this meeting as one hundred and seventy. So with a new theme today, it's never too late. It's never too late to start a new beginning. It's never too late to start a new chapter. So we thought of starting again, reviving again in this meeting. So let's move to our meeting, which is one hundred and seventy, and introduce our role take us for today. Today we have grammarian as speaker Mohan. I would like to request speaker Mohan to tell something about his role and allow to word on the thing.
Thank you so much, meeting leader. In today's meeting, I am taking a role of grammarian. As we all know, grammar is like an ingredient to any conversation. A good grammar helps a person to convey his or her words to the listener very easily. It's easily understandable. And you can get feedback as well. So grammar is very much essential in communication. Without a proper grammar, you cannot lead a good conversation. You cannot communicate well. You cannot convey your meaning well. Having said this, today at grammarian, I'll be noting the various errors, if any, of the speakers and whoever speaks during the meeting discussion, I'll be noting down the, any kind of grammatical errors if I find. And at last, I'll provide my grammarian report as per my findings. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Speaker Mohan. I have for your wonderful work. Next, we have fellow accounter as speaker Tulada Dahal. Speaker Tulada, please explain your role.
Yes, hi. I'm going to watch the filler words. What filler words are? Filler words are the unnecessary words and unnecessary gestures of a speaker. And they are depends on the speaker and language pattern. According to the language, we speakers like start and try to fill the gaps when, when we are like I just said, ah, like that, which if the filler words, long pause, short pause, are using correctly and when they can give flavor on speech, that is okay for a speech, but if they are giving, making the language ugly, they counted as, they are counted as filler words. They are like um, ah, repetitions, like, 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 like that, you know? I mean, what I mean, yes, sir, what I mean, like that. Especially, I'm going to count today, ah, um, short pause, repetition, long pause. Yes, at the end, I'll tell the report in front of you. Thank you so much.
So much, Speaker Tulada, for your wonderful explanation of filler counter. Everybody now knew what filler accounting report is and how they can cope with it. So next role we have is timer and because of two members, I'll be taking role of timer. I'll share my screen with you. This is disabled, I guess, so. No, sir, I can send this, we can manage later. So like in timer, the role of time is very, very important and as we all know that we should be in time, we should be with time. And for the first, minimum time, you will be shown green, then yellow, then red card, and after red card, or red light, you have to end up with speed, so you have summarize speed. And even after forty more seconds, you cannot summarize speed, so you will be muted. And so please be with time, so you know that what time you have to speak. So I'll be sharing this slide with Pratik, maybe again share it. So this was all about our introduction of role take us and the next important role we have is the meeting evaluator. I would like to request speaker Pratik to explain his role as well.
Okay, thank you very much, meeting leader. So it's been a long time since we've, you know, sat around the meetings. Obviously, we all have become a little bit rusty, I think. There's that quote, no two days you forget a little bit, one week you forget most of them and in twenty-one days you forget everything. And I think it's been more than twenty-one days since we've sat on, sat on a meeting. So I think we've forgotten some things or maybe have become, you know, a little rusty. And this session will obviously help fill up that gap and maybe even make this better. So according, right according to the name, the evaluation session. No spoilers. So back to you, meeting leader.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Pratik. I'm just sharing this.
I forgot to announce word of the day, Pawan.
Okay, you can continue.
The word of the day for today's meeting is rollick. The meaning for this word is move or behave in carefree, joyous manner. For example, I'm having a rollicking good time. So if we are able to use this word in our speech or any kind of conversation during the meeting, you'll be getting his round of applause and it will also help you to remember, memorize a new word today. Thank you so much.
Okay, Pratik, can you just say that slide I've sent you in status? Maybe you can say as the green, yellow and red signal. For the timing. Okay, it's been a long gap that we haven't had a formal meeting and it can be seen in our speaking as well. Whenever you go to new places and you haven't spoken for a long time and you may see it like that, you might lose some sort of confidence. And in day to day, if you are speaking with your friends, speaking with your colleagues and attending this sort of meeting and the confidence will be seen in your speaking as well. That's what I have realized and I have been sitting during EMB and and we were, you know, like, like one and a half month, we haven't been in the meeting. So while speaking, I could see myself there or I couldn't speak fluently and this sort of, you know, I couldn't speak there whatever I want to speak. So there was a lack of confidence and it was, you know, because of practice as well. So I hope we always go in these sort of meetings regularly. So we have one beautiful session coming up today with Speaker Rosni Pandey conducting hot association. So I would like to request Speaker Rosni to, you know, first tell the ground rules of hot association, what hot appreciation and how it is conducted and framing rules and begin with your session accordingly. So please help me welcome Speaker Rosni.
Thank you so much, Pawan. Good morning, everyone. I am your hot topic master for today's session. So basically, what hot topic session is? It's a session like which is designed for our guests basically and it's like an impromptu session in which you don't know about the questions and you have to speak for two minutes, for two minutes. So you will have two minutes for the specific topic and you need to speak on that specific topic. So hot topic, hot topic session is it? And I'm your hot topic master. I hope that you will show your involvement. I'm sorry, having come this way. So let's go ahead. Shall I start? Give me a thumbs up. Okay, thank you, Roskin. So my first question is, what were you most afraid of as a kid? Please unmute yourself and come forward.
May I? I think in most afraid of ghost. I never see ghost, but I heard the story of ghosts, lots of, lots types of ghosts. My brother, my sister and we three come together and heard the story, tell the story with each other. We told like that in childhood. And when door opens and some sounds come, viewer sounds come and I afraid. Even today, something is, this sounds like ghost where even today I scared, but not much like that time, but still I'm, it triggers me. Yeah, that's them. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, ma'am, for your beautiful speech. So I have another question. Which historical figure would you want to meet and why? Which historical figure would you want to meet and why? Unmute yourself.
Maybe you can just pick one of them.
Okay, I will choose you, Roskin.
I have a speech. Come on, you should give chance to other people.
Okay, I'll, I'll. It's, it's, it's like the, the session, it came impromptu in my mind. I've just, it's just my assumption. I'm just thinking about this. I was just trying to say, I have been hearing about Madan Bandari a lot. I have heard his speeches. I've heard that he was like, what kind of communist he was. If I ever get chance to meet him or I wish he was alive. I, from his speech, what I have got that he was really a real communist, what he used to think about the power, position, wealth and all. So if I got a chance to meet a historic person, I would have met Madan Bandari and interviewed him, how he would lead this corrupted Nepal ahead. I wish he was alive. The way he speaks, the way he, his, the vision and mission he had in his mind, I think he might do something better than these fake communism these days. So that's the, this was the impromptu thought I got in my mind. If I get a chance to meet a historic person, I would have chose to meet, meet Mister Madan Bandari and know his vision, mission for the development and growth of Nepal. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mohan. And the last question is, where do you see yourself in ten years? Where do you see yourself in ten years? Yoginder, I want to listen you, I want to listen your speech. Yoginder, are you, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Thank you for the beautiful topic today. It is very important to make you a plan that must be immediate plan, short term plan, midterm plan and long term plan. That must be goals or your life mission or your life plan for living in a better way. So talking about my ten years plan, that is not the long term plan, that must be my midterm plan. In ten years, I will be as a head of a very renowned and good company or I will be doing a nice business of my choice. I have first priority to lead a company as a first man. And you know it that I'm involved in insurance industry, maybe that will be my choice, my first choice. And in that first choice, my priority will go to life insurance industry. And you can note down in your diary for me that you can hit me, you can pinch me, you can force me and you, you can ask me in between, Mister Khatiwara, where are you and are you on the right track to meet your goal or are you ready to meet your, catch your mission? You can ask in between, even Rosni who is asking this question that where you will be in ten years down then, you can note it down and you can ask me in between. You can give me the suggestions, even that everyone, please remind me that I, I will be able to meet my mission and I will get that chance to lead a company and to give a message to the society that if you plan, you can meet your plan, you can do better. Back to you, hot topic master.
Thank you so much, Sal, for such a, such a hot answer. I will remind you obviously and I will take the suggestion from you too. And this is the session and it ends here, we will do it in another meeting. Back to you, team, back to you, meeting leader.
Thank you, Rosni, for your beautiful session. It was really wonderful and the participation was overwhelming. And the next session we are now having is the prepared association where we have one speaker, Speaker Roskin. So I don't think I need to tell you about Speaker Roskin and you will know him very, very well. He's a wonderful speaker. And he will be delivering speech on speech structure part one and he will have two part today. The first one will be, he'll show us one speech, then he will analyze that speech. And he is being evaluated by Speaker Yogendra. So I would like to request Speaker Yogendra to tell objectives of Speaker Roskin.
Thank you, Pawan. Speaker Roskin is presenting his first project and then is evaluating that. His main goal, he is a basic education path, project four, part one is speech structure. He, the main goal are about the main structure and stuff is like opening body and conclusion. The length of each of this, the transitions would be very smooth, long, the next objective is about limitation of the audience when listening to your speech and your time is four to six minutes. And that must be, that would be, how long? I didn't know the speech, what you are presenting, but when giving analysis, your time is four to six minutes. Back to you, Pawan.
Okay, shall I start now? Okay, I'm going to show you a short three-minute video and the topic of this video is trying something new for thirty days.
A few years ago, I felt like I was stuck in a rut. So I decided to follow in the footsteps of the great American philosopher Morgan Spurlock and try something new for thirty days. The idea is actually pretty simple. Think about something you've always wanted to add to your life and try it for the next thirty days. It turns out thirty days is just about the right amount of time to add a new habit or subtract a habit, like watching the news from your life. There's a few things that I learned while doing these thirty day challenges. The first was, instead of the months flying by forgotten, the time was much more memorable. This was part of a challenge I did to take a picture every day for a month and I remember exactly where I was and what I was doing that day. I also noticed that as I started to do more and harder thirty day challenges, my self-confidence grew. I went from desk dwelling computer nerd to the kind of guy who bikes to work for fun. Even last year, I ended up hiking up Mount Kilimanjaro, the highest mountain in Africa. I would never have been that adventurous before I started my thirty day challenges. I also figured out that if you really want something badly enough, you can do anything for thirty days. Have you ever wanted to write a novel? Every November, tens of thousands of people try to write their own fifty thousand word novel from scratch in thirty days. It turns out, all you have to do is write sixteen hundred and sixty-seven words a day for a month. So I did. By the way, the secret is not to go to sleep until you've written your words for the day. You might be sleep deprived, but you'll finish your novel. Now, is my book the next great American novel? No, I wrote it in a month. It's awful! But for the rest of my life, if I meet John Hodgman at a TED party, I don't have to say I'm a computer scientist. No, no, if I want to, I can say I'm a novelist. So here's one last thing I'd like to mention. I learned that when I made small, sustainable changes, things I could keep doing, they were more likely to stick. There's nothing wrong with big crazy challenges. In fact, they're a ton of fun, but they're less likely to stick. When I gave up sugar for thirty days, day thirty-one looked like this. So here's my question to you. What are you waiting for? I guarantee you, the next thirty days are going to pass whether you like it or not. So why not think about something you have always wanted to try and give it a shot for the next thirty days? Thanks.
So the video that you just watched is a TED speech. It was given by Matt Gottz back in 2011. Although it's nine years old, I think it's quite relevant for us too. So the topic is quite simple, trying something new for thirty days. The audience that it targets are the audience like me who have a routine task and does not have much time to do new things. The context of his speech is, I believe, is personal development and it's persuasive in nature where, but where he tries to persuade his audience what he thinks is better for everyone. So let's go in terms of structure. Obviously, this speech has a clear opening, the body and the conclusion. What I like to stress mostly on our opening part is the grabbing the attention. If you guys have noticed, he initiated with his example and he grabbed the audience by showing a filmmaker's picture. So immediately, audience was quite familiar with this. So this is something that I liked in the opening part. And in the body part, what I liked, what I admire most is he's, he has limited his points to three points. I think it's quite good. Anything more than that would have been longer. Anything shorter than that would not, would have been very low in context. And also, there is quite a small short story in the body, which I'll talk in next, in my next point. And the last thing, the conclusion, the main factor that makes this conclusion good is that speaker has called for an action. It's not only summarize the whole speech, he called for action for the audience to start something new. So I'm moving to my second point. I wanted to focus on the transitions. Now, during my speech as well, I find it quite difficult for transitioning opening to body and more importantly, from body to conclusion. What he did was quite easily. So after mentioning, after attaining the attention of audience, he mentioned why it was important and immediately after that, he shared his experiences, which is related to what he said in the opening part. And the important, important part for me is from moving from body to conclusion. Normally, how I do is I just appropriately end the body part and start with in conclusion or something like in summary. And what he did was, he ended the body part with humor in the audience by sharing his picture of the chocolates. And after that laugh in the audience, he, he easily went for the conclusion by opening with the question. So that is something that I admired. And third thing I wanted to mention is the story in the body. What I've noticed in this body part is that there is a chronological order in his three points. He started out with the benefits of doing new things as a memorable thing, followed by a simple task he did, which is taking a photography. The second thing he mentioned was self-confidence and he, and this benefit was followed by his activity hiking to Mount Kilimanjaro, which is a difficult task compared to the first exercise. And the last thing was writing a novel. So you can see a chronological order from easy steps to slightly difficult step and more difficult step. So in this way, the audience can relate from easy to difficult tasks. I think the transition of this point A to point B within the body is also quite commendable. And the last thing I wanted to focus on is the vocal variety and the body language. Why I wanted to mention in vocal variety is because normally when I speak, I speak in a straight line. I don't have much of a vocal variety, although I tried and especially I admire when he mentioned in the last part, saying that no, it's just wrote in one month, it made orange chocolate. So that kind of vocal variety is quite important. It does not make speech boring, which is something I need to learn a lot. And the last thing, the body language, I think the speaker easily rollicked from point A to point B while giving his, while explaining his point. So in summary, I would read this speech four out of five. It was simple, it was short and grabbed audience and it also called for the actions. And I think it has got everything speech needs from easy transitions to vocal variety and body languages. Thank you very much for this.
Roskin is a wonderful speech and the video I really liked that and that was really inspiring and hope I'll be able to adopt something from that speech. And this was all about our second session, that was prepared association and we had only one speaker today. And let's have some discussion about our theme, it's never too late. So if you, any of us want to share like voluntary that was there any moment that it was, you know, that you started a new chapter and it went out to be successful one? You know, any of us want to share a story like maybe in your real life event or you have heard of about your friend or relatives that you completely changed something. Is there any moment in your life? If you want to share, oh, you can just simply give a motivational theme, discuss thematic decision like, why do you think it's never too late? So can you start from Pratik? Maybe what do you think about this theme, it's never too late?
It's never too late. Okay, so I've got an example that I think I've already said before. So there was this kid, you know, a little kid who was nine years old and he thought, you know what, I'm going to learn how to play the guitar. And then he grabs a guitar, you know, asks his parents, they buy him a guitar, maybe Christmas, maybe Dose, maybe Tiar, maybe, you know, his birthday. He gets a guitar, he starts playing it, he goes to the internet and sees somebody else playing the guitar way better than. He goes to the internet and sees somebody else playing the guitar way better than him. And he's like, ah, I'm never gonna be as good as him, so I'm not gonna play the guitar. So he puts his guitar in the corner. And then he turns to be twelve years old and he sees the guitar. And he's like, you know what, I'm gonna play the guitar. So he grabs the guitar and same thing, he starts playing it, maybe one song that he likes, maybe Happy Birthday, who knows? And then he sees in the internet, somebody playing guitar better than him, okay. And then he's like, I'm never gonna be as good at him, so I'm just gonna not play it. So he puts guitar in the corner. And now he's fifteen years old, the same thing repeats. And now he's nineteen years old, same thing repeats. Now he's twenty years old. And now he's in a Zoom call in Saturday, you know, where I speak, because I'm right now, right here, and his name is Pradik Sarvaparit. And he's still looking at that guitar in the corner, never played it, it's just catching dust. Not only with the guitar, but with the piano also, right there, both things. And now I'm thinking, if I had started when I was nine years old, how good would I have been? Maybe I would have already been better than that guy played the piano or played the guitar that I saw there. So just using myself as a bad example, I like to say it's never too late to start. If you start earlier, you become better faster. If you start later, you just have less time to become better. So start right now rather than just wasting years and years of not starting right now. And that's my thought. Thank you.
That was wonderful hearing from you. And you know, we have seen many news like, you know, grandfather and grandson giving exams together and grandfather finally getting good score than grandson. So it's never too late that you start studying together or it's never too late that you are having new things. You know, it's never too late, actually. You can always start what you like, what are you good at. Or if you want to learn something, you can learn it right now. It's never too late. And anyone want to say anything? Anyone?
Yeah, first of all, I think Pratik, same thing happened to me. It started from teenage days. I even bought a secondhand guitar, but still, yeah. But I think someday, I hope I will try it. So similarly, I have same kind of experience. In fact, I would say that I still have that kind of feeling that it's too late. Oh, I think I would have been much better if I have learned much earlier. I still have that kind of regrets. But still, at this stage, I think I have realized a lot that it's never too late. Fair example would be, I think, would be my reading habits. Up until when I was twenty two years old, I hadn't read much book. And during my twenty fives, I used to regret that if I had read a lot of book, I would have got a lot of better at my job, at my studies. So in my late twenty fives, I think I started reading books. So that's a plus story. And on the negative side, yeah, nah, I had, I suck at playing guitar. I suck at most of the athletic games, even in footballs. Whenever I go to play with my friends, I wish I had scored much more goals. I wish I had played much more when I was teenager. So those kind of regrets happen, but still. Back of mind, I do realize that it's never too late. You just have to find a lot of time during your busy schedule. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking.
Yeah, I have also a story about myself. When I was in, I was in plus two. And when I finished college, I hit in class twelve, I started teaching. And after that, I became vice principal in one school. And four years, I continued this job. After that, I left the job and go to join the bachelor degree. After three years study, I finished it and continuously I did the masters. And it is never too late. After four years, I never thought that I again go to college and get TV. In my life, it's that type of condition comes and go, lots of, lots of. I don't know even today what happens like that. It is not too late for anything. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tulazaman. And for others who want to share, we'll come back to you again after evaluation session. And now we're moving to evaluation session. And I would like to request the evaluator of today, speaker Pratik, to continue his session.
Thank you very much, meeting leader. So I had, you know, kind of little bit, what do you call that? Teased a little bit about the evaluation session. And now here we are, time passes by so fast. So welcome to the evaluation session. This session will be evaluating. Now evaluating might sound like a big scary word to everybody because, you know, it's like report card, oh, you know, what's gonna happen? So it's nothing like that. We're just gonna, you know, have positive criticism and make ourselves better or reach the place that we were before. So without further ado, the first session we have is obviously direct evaluation. And as our august speaker, Yojendra has said, what Roskin has to do, now he'll say what he did. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome our speaker, Yojendra, please.
Bringing a speech to the audience, presenting it, engaging them and closing it, giving them something bring home. It a challenging job for a leader. So as to our speaker Roskin, who is seasoned speaker and impromptu idea giver all this. He is always ready to give something new to the audience. And even today, he has bought a nice speech given by someone who was there to engage the audience, giving his own experience, sharing it and giving some ideas to change their minds to trying something new in just thirty days times. That must be very subtle. While analyzing that speech by our speaker Roskin, it was very nice flow, nice transition, adding some points in between. Analyze that speaker to bring that points to our speakers, our audience and giving some own ideas from that. He was pointing that even I, when I speak, I'm not able to make the transition from opening to body to closing. That is very unique given by you today. When you were giving your opening, that was good. But if you wanted, if you want to make it better, you can add giving some quotations or something new in that that could be good in opening part. Talking about body, you were connecting to one, one points to another and adding some sub-points. But in between, if you could ask the question to the audience and bring and give the points or ideas, if you connect that, that could be much better. And talking about vocal variety of that speaker, you could add that you can make your vocal variety win. If you go the long journey like this and it is better to bring that, that you can combine that, those vocal varieties. Talking about transition, you had better transition than that speaker. I felt so. Besides this, all for the action is most important. From that speaker to you to deliver it to your audience, that is more important. Besides this, you have done a great job. If you could make it relate to those feedbacks that I have given in opening body and conclusion part, you have justified your analysis that you can do like this, this, this. It would be better like this. On and all, you have done a nice job. You have met the objectives of the project and we are hungry. We are eager to listen your more projects in days to come. Congratulations, you have completed this project. Thank you so much for the nice presentation, analysis and nice speech.
Thank you for the feedback. Very helpful.
Pratik.
Okay. Thank you very much, evaluator, direct evaluator, august speaker, Yojendra. So one question before we go, who is this Auragin Healthcare? I just noticed right now. No idea. Okay, no problem then. So I was just curious, no problem. So.
Some company is joining us?
Excuse me?
Some organization, I guess, like healthcare.
So interesting.
Initially, I was there, Agorian Healthcare. I read like this.
I also thought of that.
I'm like, I agree, I guess.
Later on, I again. Sorry, sorry.
No, no problem. Okay, so the next one, now that was the end of direct evaluation session. We had one speaker, although very fantastic. We had one speaker and our one in direct evaluation is over. Now the next one is indirect evaluation. And for the indirect evaluation, the first person I'd like to call is grammarian, the grammarian report, which is August speaker Mohan Aya. So please, the stage is yours.
Thank you so much, meeting evaluator, Pratik. Talking about grammar today, it was really a wonderful session. There were few grammatical errors I got to notice. But like in Tulazaman's piece, I found like she said, I never see ghost, ghost. But like when you are talking about past, you use past in like, I never saw ghost. Like sometimes she uses the sentence like, where sounds come, I afraid. It was like there was some kind of grammatical mismatch. But there were not much errors. In Roskin's speech, I found he is fond of using and so many times. In his speech, he was using and, and then that was the somehow mismatch of grammar I found in his speech. And the word of the day was used by Roskin Marjan, he was round of applause for him. It was only used once. So this was the grammarian report from my side. It was really wonderful session. Thank you. Back to you, meeting evaluator.
Okay, thank you very much, August speaker Mohan Aya. I thought, I was thinking I'd use the word today, but it slipped my mind as well. That's what it means to be rusty, I guess. It's been so long. So the next one is the filler word counting report with August speaker Tulazaman. So please.
Yes, I'm here with killer word counting report. I couldn't find any filler words today. Besides some reputations of Pratik. He used lots of you know. And Roskin, he already said one, already said and, and like that. And Yojendra saw some short pauses. And besides that, I couldn't find anything. It may be my mistakes or my lack of knowledge and lack of observation or we are going perfect. I don't know. How this second is the true? That's my all report of the filler word counting. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much, August speaker Tulazaman. So before the last report, timing report, I'll give my own evaluation so that I myself can be also timed. So one second timer. So my report, today's meeting, it's been so long that I didn't even notice that I already forgotten the format of the meeting itself. So I have to open as in the sheet in the side and look at it, what is going to happen now, what's gonna happen? So even it sounds like I was out of clue. But today's meeting, it started on, it started decently on time. We were better than before with our timing. I think we started at ten, eight, ten, something like that. So rather than before, it was way better. So let's get better and get to eight o'clock. The meeting, before the meeting, our meeting leader obviously has been trying to get a meeting from the last week, not just this week. So it's been two weeks of effort to get this meeting going on. So one big round of applause for our meeting leader here. August speaker Paul, and sir, first pulling through and getting us all together and letting us all experience our, once again, for a very long time. The theme of the meeting is really nice. It's been used nicely and we're still going to discuss about it after some time. The word of the day is a nice, nice word of the day, but it wasn't used as much, even I myself forgot. And the meeting itself now. Our meeting leader has done a phenomenal job as he always does. You know, just conducting the meeting, introducing people, conducting the meeting, you know. I said the same thing twice. So he's done a good job. Our hot topic speech session. So one thing I'd like to say about hot topic is these days, it feels like rather than hot topic, it's become a hot question session, you know, there's only question. It's not a hot question session, it's a hot topic session. You're supposed to give a topic, not a question. So every time it starts with whether WH question or a how question is all that. How do you feel about this? Where do you want to go? Or what would you do if you went to the past or something like that, right? So I would like to see more topics rather than only questions. And with questions, there's always a limitation of answering. With topics, there's no limitation. You can always get creative with it, you know? So that's, that's one thing I'd like to see. But otherwise, it was conducted beautifully, a good job. August speaker Roshni, the topics were good, rather than the questions were good. And speakers themselves gave good answers, Tulazaman with a very good answer. Mohan Aya with the second topic, he talked about some good points about modern Bhannadi. And Yojendra, he's always been logical and apparently he has all his plans sorted out for the next ten years, I found out. So in the prepared speech session, so Roskin, we had a one speaker, Roskin Marjan doing speech structure, the fourth project's first part, analysis. I think this was his first analysis. Or have you done an analysis before? No, first analysis. Okay, so it just felt like he was, you know, he had already done an analysis, he was just doing it again. So that's why I asked again. It was a very good analysis. It was good in following and the speech itself was good. And I like this limitation that the guidelines also removed of a time limitation of speeches. Before you had to do an exact speech of either eight to ten minutes. And if you found a speech that was good, if it is longer, you can use it, if it's shorter, you can use it. So I like that they removed this limitation. It's really good to see more speeches coming through now. One thing I wanted to say, so the thematic discussion now after that, it was very lively and many people talked. It was very positive and I'm looking forward to the thematic discussion coming in after this session. Evaluation session, direct evaluation, as our speaker Yojendra, always, good as always with his evaluations. He gave a lot of positive feedback to Roskin and I'm sure he listened to it and thought about it and will think about it. And in indirect evaluation, our grammarian, August speaker Mohan, he gave a good evaluation. One thing I'd like to say is using names in grammarian evaluation has always been a type of a taboo. But I think it's okay to use names in grammarian evaluation, as long as you don't use name for new members. I would say if there are new members or guests, just don't use their names. They'll find out themselves if they want to. But for old members, it's okay to use their name because we're all trying to become better. For new members, it might feel a little bit true. I'm not sure. But for old members, there's no problem. Killer word counter, the report itself was good. We're all doing our best. Maybe we did so good that we didn't have a lot of killer words. But the reporting was, there was no problem reporting. You didn't give a, you did this number of this, you did this number of this. But the report itself came through, you know, Yojendra said this, I did my you know and short pauses. And there was the report itself. It was good. There's no problem. And with that, my evaluation ends here. So over to you, timer. Please give us our timing report. August speaker Paul.
Okay, so today in hot topic session, Speaker Tulaza, she spoke for fifty nine second. And in the time was one to two minutes. And second speaker Mohan, he spoke for one minute and twenty five seconds. And we had third speaker in the same session, Speaker Yogendra, he spoke for two minutes and forty second. And the final speaker for today in prepared speech session, the one and only speaker, Speaker Ruskin, he spoke for five minutes and fifteen second. Thank you, so I would only note for speakers only today.
Did you show timing card for me?
Well, we use for Ruskin only, I guess, no, I was about to share it, but I will share it in the one.
Yeah, it caught my attention, I didn't know you were showing it mobile. Quite distracted with that.
I don't, I didn't want to share the screen, because when you share the screen in the recording, it just shows this big screen and a little bit of a person head. So it just, the recording becomes bad due to the shared screen.
I have to think alternative of timer, I don't know, how can we manage this?
Also with the interaction, this is good, because all of us are showing videos, I think this is more closer to having a face-to-face reaction. So I think this is going good.
Even my suggestion is to let's, let's share that timing card, because we are here to improve.
No, no, next time we can, the timer can use the background, no? Even I, my this green wall in the behind that can become red, yellow or green. So even with this much, it should be enough. And somebody, we can put somebody in technical support that. Make the timer screen bigger or spotlight video, give them post or something. So next time we can prepare for that, rather than impromptu, we try and do this. So, there there are methods, there's no problem. I just didn't want to share the screen, the recording, it just showed big green thing. And then there's this little small person just talking, so rather than that, I didn't want to do that, that's thing. So, that was the evaluation session. Thank you everybody for listening to my evaluation. And I hope you all take something from that I've said and something, everybody that I shared opinions here. Now, back to you, meeting leader, so that was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for taking, it was wonderful session. So I would like to request our speaker Yogendra for the concluding remark at the end. But before that, if anyone want to share about him again, so if you have anything to share.
I forgot about one thing, I I realized that I should have joined, I used to regret that I should have joined a speakers club. Much earlier and I realized this, so even in after work and I'm enjoying this, just wanted to share this.
Actually worked, you know, you may not realize the efficiency that you have improved or not, but. When you find a real case that you have to speak of, then it really works a lot. You will realize at the end that you did a wonderful job doing this sort of club. So, anybody else want to speak upon theme or anything you want to share, you are free now?
I'd like to speak on theme a few, for a few minutes.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm just sharing a story I had just. Was few days ago, yesterday also I was about, it is about the Masala King of India. How he managed from rags to riches. He's none other than Mr. Mahesh Dharampal Gulati. We all know the brand M D H. I knew, I came to knew that, well, there was separation between India and Pakistan. He was in, he got separated to India side and he moved to Delhi with rupees fifteen hundred in his. Pocket, I guess. He was working as a rickshaw puller in Delhi. When he started, before he started this masala business, he was in rickshaw pulling job. He saved certain money and he tried several, five, six ventures, but he failed in all those. Then finally he came into this masala business and with fifteen hundred cash in his pocket, now he, he passed away. Few days back, at days of ninety eight. With fifteen hundred rupees in his pocket, now he has left five thousand, more than five thousand crores of empire. To his inheritance, to his son and to his, to his family. So, what I learned from a small clip of his lifeline is what he was at the time. How he changed himself. After failing in six new ventures, he tried also, he never lose. Hope, he never got afraid of change. So, it's never too late to be what you might have been. Or it's never too late to make things right. So, with fifteen hundred rupees, now you can see the empire of five thousand crores. You can see the change. So, it's never too, too late to start a new beginning. Thank you so much.
Become one, it was really wonderful and inspiring. So maybe we are at the end of the meeting, so I would like to request speaker Yogendra to wrap up the meeting with closing remark.
Uh, thank you, meeting leader Paul. I don't have those wrappers. Again, and Speaker Tulaza is long way from that another, another part of the earth. And we are here from our part of the earth. And after many weeks, how many weeks, I think. Be three weeks back, we are all together. And we expect from Madam Tulazamam to lead the meeting in next week. I I propose you to lead the meeting as a meeting leader, if you are ready very quick.
Sorry, sorry, I am not sure about my setting, so I cannot promise it.
You can come in between, no problem.
Oh, yeah.
In between, but make it, make it in your mind that I have.
Yeah.
That leadership role.
Of course.
It is my request. I'm not, I'm not going to give the particular person-to-person. And role-to-role evaluation or feedbacks here. I'm here to give my closing remarks. Before that, talking about the theme of the meeting that I wanted to share, that. That thing, if you do in early days. You get into the track of your life, of your daily life, that is not other than yoga and meditation. Early in two thousand, two thousand, two thousand one, that one of my friends. Have shared some tricks of yoga and meditation. And later. We, that that discontinued and I always eager and hungry to get. Detail benefits or detail ideas, detail tips to follow it. Later in two thousand nine and ten, I got chance to get a five days training session. And that also was not continued. I again. Stayed hungry to get that, that hunger drives to me to two thousand fifteen and sixteen. Finally, I got chance to get. To do yoga and meditation from, from sort of people and some gurus. And after a year, I turned myself into yoga teacher. Maybe it was a little bit, I I was not perfect, but I got that chance. When I am a teacher. I get to get into the topic, I go for the study, get some top, some points to deliver it to other person. That make me more sound and even today, this morning, before this meeting. I was there to get international yoga, international training of yoga and meditation that was. Given from Australia, that I'm, that is virtually, I'm taking part of this and. It's not too late to get something, that if you hungry to get it for your life. Doing yoga and meditation, it's not just for the body, it is for mind and soul. And it makes your day and your, your lifestyle and your entire life. Will be more enjoyable, more fitted. I hardly go to the hospital, not for myself, but to see other people, they are lying on the bed. Taking medicines, taking fruits and harleques, but my request, you do not bring harleques to me in hospital. Bring it home, we will share it. And we, we, we can enjoy, we, we, we can enjoy. So my, my suggestion, it's not late. It's not too late to take any suggestions, any ideas, go for the yoga session. Take some, some trips and some, some tricks that learn it, no problem, it's, it does not take. It, it may take many days, many weeks, many months, many years, no problem, just my suggestion, my request. Let's do, go for it and bring it like today, everyone. Talking about today's meeting, everyone has done a good job in their respective role. Talking about meeting leader to hot topic master, it's not hot question master, it is hot topic master like. Speaker Pratik said, I, I always, I always suggest to do that. And other role takers like speakers and the best speech from Ruskin and best evaluation from Pratik. And other indirect role takers like, like grammarian, like timer and filler word counter. And I don't know this person. Aragin Healthcare, who is that? Our request is to comment to.
Yeah.
You.
We want to namaste you, Agorian please, Aragin Healthcare.
On your video on, let's have a, let's have a picture together and let's post it in our social page. So that many other people may think that I, I regretly missed that meeting. And hope to see you in next week with this enthusiasm and, and another request is. Please bring one friend with you. Thank you so much, thank you for your roles and thank you for participating. And thank you for making this meeting a fruitful one.
Yeah. Yeah, I subscribed you. All your.
Thank you.
This visits and request for yoga.
Okay. Oh yeah, finally.
Hello, namaste, good morning.
It's a beautiful face.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, welcome.
I was just, I was just, I was just like, what to say, observing like how the meeting goes on and. Like how can I learn from this meeting, no? And actually, actually, I was looking for a social group that where I can learn. I can wait, where I can improve my English and like where I can improve my fluency. And I was still not yet decided which group I should join and I'm like, it's time so work it. So.
Ma'am, your fluency is better than ours.
No, sir, no, no, not at all. So I have been watching you all speaking and it's really well, you, you, you all are doing really well and. I want to be the same like you all. And I hope like you have started the journey like. The, the way I am right now. So, I hope I will be able to improve my English and my fluency very soon. And so I was, I was, I was trying to know the, how the meeting goes and what is the. In what way the meeting goes, no? So can you please make me, can you please guide me like if I have to join the group? Like what is the process or there is some formal procedure to join the meeting or something like that?
Yeah, can you give us your email, can you just write email in the text box?
Yes.
And can we have an introduction please, like what you do, your name and how did you know about?
Uh so, namaste everyone and actually my name is Januka Bista. And I work in Auragin Healthcare, where we provide here transplantation service, dental service, physiotherapy and Auragin Care Home Service. Always care service. So I work as a sales and marketing department out there and I have been working in this organization since I think four years. And since I am in my sales and marketing, the, marketing department, I realized that I, I need to improve my English. And I need to improve my vocabulary as well as my fluency and that's why I'm looking to join in all those groups. So, that is, that's all. And regarding this group, I came to know through my, I saw, I think. What was his name? I, I forgot, like he is my actually teacher. And he suggested me to join this group and it is really helpful for you and that's why I like, I joined this group. So.
Welcome to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Your fluency is great, your fluency is great. If you develop your fluency, you will be run. We cannot catch you.
Yeah, and, and today's theme is so like, so good and nice, very nice to like. It's, I mean, the theme is really good and I was thinking that, yeah, it's really not late, even though now I like. What, what people says is no, like whatever you have to learn, you have to learn during the school time and during your college time and after that. Like you, you may not be like, like you may not fit to join the classes and all those things, no? And now, now I realize that even though I'm already, I have already completed my education studies, not comply at least. Uh so, I realize that it's still, it's not late for me to start learning English. Yeah, it's really not.
No, yeah, you are right. Never too late for do something. If somebody thinks that, it is too late. It is laziness.
Yes.
So one thing, can we all just, you know, turn on our video, smile for the camera, I'll take one screenshot.
Yeah, Rusni, are you there, Rusni?
Yeah, Rusni. We want, we want not to miss you.
Yeah, without Rusni, the photo cannot come.
Uh no, no light, no beauty.
So.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go outside.
Are we done with the picture?
Once more, okay, once more.
Yeah, yeah. I should be.
Time, so that it could be a good correction, internet connection, it's really worse here.
Don't worry, it's right, you are looking beautiful, don't worry.
Thank you very much.
Is it done?
Yeah, I think.
Actually, I just joined to see how the meeting goes, okay, I, I like, I'm, that's why it's like so informal environment and all these things and I'm so sorry for that.
No worries. Alright guys, I need to go, see you next week.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I have to sleep.